In accord, well, good evening. I'll try to get good evening. Okay. In accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act NJSA 1046 BL 1975, C-231 S-1 amended 2006 C-70 S-2, the Asbury Park Board of Education has provided adequate notice of this meeting by sending a notice of the time, date, location into the extent known the agenda of this meeting to Asbury Park Press, the New Coaster on January 4th, 2019 by email. Copies of this notice have also been placed at the Administration Building Bulletin Board, District Schools, Asbury Park Municipal Building, Asbury Park Police Department, and filed with the City Clerk on January 4th, 2019. Our mission statement, Asbury Park School District, will provide all students with a comprehensive and progressive education where everyone possesses the skills and character to succeed in a diverse evolving global society. Mr. Hastings, roll call please.
Ms. Breach, Mr. Grillo.
Here.
Ms. Jones.
Here.
Mr. Lotaraka.
Here.
Ms. Lizinski.
Here.
Mr. Pinkney.
Mr. Saunders.
Ms. Setien.
Here.
Ms. Chavez Anderson.
Here. Please stand for the class.
Mr. Lotaraka, would you like to go first, please?
Thank you. The Finance Committee met and reevaluated the responses to the RFP for the insurance broker, that broker that would work with us in managing general liability policies as well as the healthcare and dental plans. The committee is recommending reappointing AccraSure, who was our broker last year, for consistency of service and their recent efforts with regard to wellness, starting, I believe, in May with a new contact, direct contact for us in the district. AccraSure has health sessions, wellness sessions at each of the schools that have been well attended and have set up a specific and consistent plan for providing wellness services to the The issue that had come up was that we had specifically identified wellness as a critical issue for the broker to work with us this past year, and AccraSure was not responsive through most of the year. They've apologized for that, noting that there was some kind of misunderstanding, but in terms of the outreach by the district to the broker, we weren't getting a response. You've seen their proposal, and then we also included Treadstone's proposal as, as I said, the committee is recommending AccraSure. I would be presenting the minority opinion just in light of how I do business. I felt 10 months of nonresponsiveness was significant and that it requires a change and that Treadstone was the one of the finalists there in terms of their presentation, their ideas, their approach to how they would respond throughout the year. So I'll throw it open, Madam President, or Joe, if you want to add anything else to the recommendation from your standpoint, but that was, I tried to do that with stating my minority.
Absolutely. Mr. Lotaraka, thank you. Mr. Grillo, any comments?
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, so we, the Finance Committee decided to recommend giving AccraSure another chance. It seems that, from what they said, there was some sort of miscommunication with an employee that left, and they were kind of caught off guard, and they thought that things were being done, and they weren't. But since they were given a talking to by the administration, they've showed up at community events, they've done wellness, they've started doing wellness towards some of the staff already, and they identified those that had certain issues that they were able to identify. And so I think what the majority was saying is, let's, now that they're on track, let's not switch horses in midstream, and let's keep them for another year, but most importantly is that we wanted AccraSure to also report out to us. I was saying every two months, but even on a quarterly basis, so that way we can see, you know, what the numbers are, what the metrics are, and that way there's more outreach and engagement, not just with school events, but also community events. I take them at their word, that that's what they're going to do. They've been really responsive. When they identify the problem, they eliminated the problem, and they resolved it with what they're doing now, so that's where I stand in terms of, let's not switch horses in midstream, let's see what they do now that they've got their act together, and we go forward. So.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Grillo. I believe in consistency within the district. We've had enough of the revolving door. As far as, it's not a probation period, we cannot place them on that, but at least they could report out to us on a monthly or quarterly basis. I spoke to Mr. Hastings. I also spoke to Mr. Hastings in regards to, as we move forward, that we would also be able to hold the staff to see if they benefited, you know, and how they feel about the broker that we end up appointing. And that is something that we can do. So for me, it would be AccraSure, but again, is maintaining consistency in the district. Mrs. Jones, you had a comment or?
A question. They've been in this business for a long time. They have other schools. Why do they have to practice on us? I mean, we hired them to take care of our business, they should know what our business is, and it should be taken care of without us chasing them, and I don't know why they deserve another shot. I'm sure they don't treat other schools like that, or they would, they would be out of business.
Ms. Setien.
I had the opportunity to attend, I'm not on the committee, but I had the opportunity to attend the meeting, in part because it's the meeting right before mine, and other part because it bleeds into my meeting. Most of the interviews were done 12 until 11, so, you know, my committee meeting is right after. And not only did I have the chance to partake in this meeting, but I had the chance to partake in the meeting prior, where they got awarded, and they were clearly told that that's what we wanted. They didn't discover the problem by themselves, we kind of highlighted it for them, and then they started working in May. Now, I understand Madam President's point on consistency, but consistency for the last month. So for me, I'm with Dominic, and I'm with you, like, I think that there, it can't be, it can't go back to one employee, your whole, your whole business can't hang on one employee. And I think we have settled for mediocrity before, and we need to stop settling for it.
Any other questions or comments?
So, one other thing that I wanted to mention was that, the people, the firm that we had before AccraSure, we decided to switch, right? Treadstone employs the same people that we had before, so it's just something to keep in mind. Again, to me, it's something where I think we, they resolve the problem, and I don't know what happened, they also, they're also the insurance broker for the city as well. So they do cities and schools. So I say we give them another shot, and I mean, we hold them accountable, and they make sure that they report out to us, so.
Okay, I've got a few other things from the committee. District's reviewing votes from appraisal companies, we have to assess our capital assets. You'll also see tonight, there's the list of annual renewals for all our contracts, that's something just consistent with state law, that we have to renew, and the one, the one vote, content vote, will be on the insurance broker, the others are just simply a bureaucratic requirement that we renew them, formally renew them going into the new fiscal year. And believe it or not, the legislative audit has been concluded, so we don't have findings yet. There was a brief exit interview, I believe, Jeff, and we'll see those findings.
Yes, excuse me. Ms. Bray, Ms. Morrison, myself met with the legislative audit team probably about a month ago now. At that meeting, they discussed some of the issues that they were looking at, and advised us that they'd be writing a draft report. They'd left the building physically beginning of June, and they advised us that we could expect maybe to see a draft from them in July at some point. So they'll schedule another meeting with us in July, hopefully come in, discuss those findings or recommendations, and at that point, the district will have a fixed number of days to respond to them, and our response, if we choose to respond, will be attached to their report that gets submitted to the legislature.
And that concludes Finance.
Thank you, Mr. Lotaraka. Policy?
Okay, Policy Committee went over, there's a group of regulations that the board has to adopt by state statute or administrative law. We did it a number of years ago, and we hadn't done it in a little while, so we're reviewing what may have to be updated and a list of what we have to improve, so the test is a little daunting, so we're not going to be doing it this month, but hopefully next month we might be able to get it accomplished and get it on the agenda. We also talked about Regulation 4230, about private enterprise, and we talked about sustainability worksheet, because there's several policies that we can adopt to help get points for the district and each individual school, depending on what the great teams may want to do, and that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Lizinski. Buildings and Ground Chair, Ms. Setien.
Sure. Very quickly, we had a facilities request, which we went over, it's for a Christian concert, they'll be charging at the door, and the committee was willing to waive the $500 for the facility, but the hard costs, we were not willing to waive. The custodians, the people that have to work the equipment, we're not willing to waive that, that's on the agenda for tonight. Also, there's a complaint about a charity softball game by the city. The city was there, somebody came and complained about what was being done, but the mayor was there, the deputy mayor was there, the assistant chief of police was there, it was the city, it wasn't a bunch of hooligans, so I don't know if the person's going to be here to complain tonight, but, okay. So there was that ESIP, the district has put out an RFP for the ESIP, which the responses are due July 24th. And there was also an issue with access to the facilities. There were civilians on the grounds during school hours, so we just have to clarify what public use of facilities means.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Ms. Breach.
We may have a meeting in, took a break because we were fundraising in May, April, so we hope we can be in July.
Thank you. Oh. Would you please report out? Sorry.
As Mr. Ruiz organizes himself with the agenda, I just want to just jump in a little bit and talk about many of the items that fall under the curriculum and instruction heading are more so focused on the programs that we'll be offering in the summer. There are a little hefty, somewhat larger items, because as we're closing out this school year for the opening of another school year, you'll find that we have program renewal, textbook adoption, and textbook kits that also include professional development that you'll find on that section, in that section, for curriculum and instruction. We are continuing and looking to also have resolution items that support our MOUs as we are renewing things for the upcoming school year. Very delighted that we have the Write On Sports Camp at Monmouth University that will be beginning July 8th to July 19th. That will support our students as they are, as we continue to integrate writing across disciplines, but also leveraging the interest that our students have in athletics, so that they are in a very intensive writing academy at Monmouth University that incorporates sports journalism, because we want to ensure that our students are academic and scholar athletes. So I would like to direct your attention to bullet number 19 on B8, as that speaks to that. The Conserv Wildlife Foundation continues to support us in the district and will continue to have that partnership with them, with our third grade students. Always having the third grade students at that catchment area allows us to try to capture as many students as we can in a very thoughtful way, so that our students are understanding not just the environment and isolation, but understanding their role in that. As I mentioned, there's a larger item, B9, number 23, that I want to specifically highlight, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Ruiz, so he can, you know, move forward, but I do want to highlight B9, item 23, as that is a very important, a very important resolution in that it speaks to pre-K programming, not just for our classrooms in the district, but also within the consortiums. And so we want to be able to provide very comprehensive support in pre-K, because what you will hear me speak to later on is the word deficiency that our students are coming to us with. And the fact of the matter is that we need to supplement and bolster our pre-K program to increase the vocabulary that our students are hearing. And so that item is one that I wanted to specifically draw your attention to. I'm going to turn the rest of that curriculum and instruction agenda over to Mr. Ruiz. I, as I said, just teased out key resolution items that I wanted to specifically speak to.
To follow up on that, we have, we also have to continue our progress, or I should say, our continuing movement with Teaching Strategies goal, and so to that, to that end, we are continuing our connection with the state, and so we're renewing our requirement for preschool implementation of the creative curriculum, that's item number 24 on B9, as well as item number 25 on B9 as well. We are looking to, item number 26, looking to have an ed camp that's hosted here in the district. We're right now looking at this particular building for that. It's a minimal cost to the district, basically, what we want to do is have an exciting ed camp that invites all stakeholders in the state to come and provide PD and different training opportunities for our staff and for all different staff in the community in the tri-state area. As you know, we are still continuing our Dream Academy cohort, we're going to, we have our summer sessions, that's, those are items number 27, 28, and, yeah, items number 27, 28, where we are continuing, our students, we actually have students that are attending part of the summer session now, they actually started before the school year ended, so we wanted to make sure we covered those students, and they're going to continue all the way through, all the way through June 26th. So we have a lot of different, if you look at number 28, you can see some of the courses that some of the students are taking. We have students taking geology, you name it, geography, and other different courses that they need to take, history, math, and so that's what you see reflected there. Same thing with item number 29 as well, it's part of our education, our writing program. We have students in our cohort 22, so this year we have a full complement of students going to the Dream Academy, so it's pretty exciting for us right now. I'm just looking for some of the bigger ones.
If I may, I would like to just interject for a moment. Very excited to focus and highlight number, item number 32, which is our student inclusion program. The fact of the matter is that it's extremely important in light of our conversations around, nationally, our conversations around mental health, around students feeling included, around being, and ensuring that our students are known and noticed. And so I was extremely delighted when we were approached by the Brian Holland Legacy Foundation to support our students at the high school for just that, being known and noticed. There are a myriad of issues that are plaguing our society, our children, and oftentimes, students can go through their academic career in large schools, comprehensive high schools, or very small schools, and sometimes, for whatever reason, unbeknownst to me, they can still manage to not have interaction with their peers. This program, I want to just give kudos to Mr. Ruiz and his team, and I'd like to thank the Brian Holland Foundation Board members for bringing this idea and notion to us, to have some space and place where we are specifically calling out those students that are not known and noticed through an ambassador-inclusive program at the high school. The whole goal and objective of that is that no student in the school should ever, specifically at lunchtime, when those are times of the day when students are supposed to interact and be collaborative with one another. Yes, we encourage that in classroom through small group instruction, but no one should ever have to eat alone, no one should ever have to be alone, unless they're choosing to do that. And Mr. Ruiz and his team have done a fantastic job of working out curricular and creating experiences in collaboration with Principal Baumgartner, so that there are ambassadors at the high school that will make it their business to reach out to other students that would otherwise not have interaction from their peers. So I'm extremely delighted. I want to thank the members of the Brian Holland Legacy Foundation, one of whom I know, Mr. Pinkney, has been a member of that board, but just the fact that there was that interest from the board of wanting to make sure that we had inclusive programming highlighted and recognized that our high school says so much. I know when I was at the Asbury Park Toy Drive, I had an opportunity of one of the fundraisers in the dunk tank that Ms. Breach is always involved in, I had an opportunity to come to meet this gentleman, and the impact that he's had, and I know Barbara, you also worked very closely on that AP Toy Drive, and the impact that he had on the community, and for the short period of time that I got to know him, I got the sense that he was the embodiment of wanting to ensure students, all students, were included. So I just want to thank the members of the board, this board, for A, making that introduction, and for B, ensuring that our team on our side had an opportunity to bring us to the forefront, so thank you so much.
So as we continue on, item number 34, which previously was in the previous board agenda in May, we will, I wanted to make sure that there were some other coaches that were explicitly included in this agenda item, because we didn't include the middle and high school coaches, but I also wanted to have some extra time, because I'm going to work very closely with my supervisors and the coaches on an explicit, very specific data analysis of our students, and I want every teacher to walk in the first day with a complete set of what we call a data profile of each student that walks into their classroom. And so we're going to need to take the summer to do some of that work, I need these coaches to work closely with me and my team, so that we can have that data available day one. I want that available day one for every teacher in the building, which requires us to really do a lot across, you know, looking at all these different data sets, but also housing in one place, so that we can make it easier as the year goes on. Okay. We're looking now at number 37. We recommend leaving that to waterproof for 10 high school students to work in collaboration with the Hackin' Sack Theory in Health, that's on B2 up to 11, excuse me. It's an exciting program, because we are at a point now where we can start giving accreditation to our students. Some of our students are going to walk away with EMT licensing and certification, which I'm pretty excited about, that some of our students can come out of high school and go right to work. So this is one of those programs that I think are essential for our students and some of the work that's being done in the district with the CTE, so I'm real excited about that. Yes. Oh. Mr. Pinkney? I'm sorry.
You can continue.
I apologize, Mr. Pinkney. It's over to you, my friend.
You can continue right now.
I have, saying it's a pinkie. All right, so we'll continue on, number 38, I want to direct your attention to B11, 38 as well. We're doing some work with the, with the high school and Dr. Monmouth King School. We're partnering with Central Jersey Family Health Consortium for a teen outreach program, called TOP. We're also doing some of this at the middle school, it's kind of a mixture of two programs. It's kind of self-explanatory, the best, the great thing about it is that it's no cost to the district. They're going to be coming in and doing weekly meetings with our youth during the school year, they have a community learning component, so they're going to be outreaching to students and families, and facilitating health and different activities to train our students instead. Okay, I want to point your attention to B12, number 43 and 44, the CAT program, and that is the Child Assault Prevention Project, where we have funding directed towards child abuse and child assault prevention, both in middle and high school and elementary school. There are two different, how do you call it, there are two different funds here, one requires 50% matching funds from the district, the other one requires 30%, but the district may submit a waiver for the matching fund. But the district may submit a waiver for the matching funds for either, for either program. So I just wanted to point those out. Also, lastly, number forty-six, we recommend that the board approve the YMCA to continue to provide counseling services. This is big, this has been important, especially in the school building, to have counseling services that come to the building for our students. It's strictly, uh, parents have to sign their students up, and it's confidential. So it's like a parent taking a student to an outside agency, but instead, because it's housed in the building, the access to the students is there from the YMCA. They're able to do real deep clinical type of psychological work with our students and with their families. They meet regularly with mom and dad so they can help our students. I think it's been a major, um, uh, uh, it's been a major positive for our students here when I was a grad. So I think that, um, I would love to see that continue. So I would put that in the board's agenda. And I think we'll end there. If anybody has any questions, please.
I wanted to, I can't find it. The Princeton Program?
Yes.
I think is great and strongly supported. Love to see, uh, see us get, uh, some press on that. Uh, my concern was just to make sure I understand. So we'll have four students going that might have to be selective in terms of the students, but concerned that it's also fair. And so just a little bit on how, how we choose these particular students for something that's, uh, you know, I, I, I think a great, a great benefit for them.
So these students that, these students are continuing, if I'm not mistaken. These are the students that have already started this program last year. So these same students are continuing this year to go to this. It's very intense for, you know, it's a very intensive program. Um, so students, and they're not, um, these are students that have been recommended and have been going now, I believe, for two years.
Right, well then, a- as we started, just a little, how are we, how are we getting to make sure, yes, it might be selective, but it's, it's fair in, in terms of how we're selecting those students then, who may be doing it over the course of a few years to, uh, to great benefit?
So last year when we started the program, we had an orientation for parents and the students. And parents that were invited were students that were high achieving students because of the rigor of the program, um, especially being at Princeton. So they were probably, um, mostly our Dream Academy students or candidates to be Dream Academy students that were in seventh or eighth grade. Um, that's where they came from.
So I'm gonna talk a little bit more this evening when I have to give my presentation. But, I mean, excuse me, during my presentation, but just a little, uh, data point. When I started here, we assessed this district. We were over seventy-five percent. Our students were over seventy-five percent below grade level in reading. Closer to eighty-five percent. All the headlines and what the governor was touting was seventy-five percent. We kind of stuck with that one. But our internal analysis indicated closer to eighty-five percent. The point that I want to make there is that it wasn't a hundred percent. Although fifteen percent is certainly nothing to rest your laurels on, that's an indication that those are students that needed something. They were on grade level. They needed something too. When we talk about equity, we want to make sure that we have something for all students. So an inordinate focus on students that are low performing does nothing to support and strengthen students that are on grade level. How do we, what is our grade equalizer? This is one of those programs that was put in place specifically, A, to, um, stretch those students so that we can expand, even if it's two kids that could be in an advanced placement course, we want to be able to say that we have something for all of our children. This is an example of that. It was launched last year for the first time. And it, it really involves strong parental engagement. One of our students now, her mom, actually did the post on Facebook as she was driving her down, so excited, so elated to be there. But I'll talk a little bit more in the presentation. Are there any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Ruiz. Public participation in accordance with Board Policy Zero One Six Seven is now open. You have three minutes. We see that there isn't anyone. I'm gonna close it. Okay, and a review of regular meeting agenda items.
Madam President, I actually have a question.
For the what?
For, for, uh, for Mr. Hastings. Just more just an educational thing for myself, if I can ask you.
Okay.
Is that okay? Um, so in terms of, um, the ESIP and what we're doing there, I, I was in conversation with someone who was, their school district is doing a similar thing. They're going through an engineer instead of an architect. And, I mean, to me, it, you know, at, at face value, it doesn't really make, make any difference. But I was, I just wanted to know what the difference is in terms of going with, how some school districts go with an architect and others go with an engineer to do ESIPS.
Well, the, we have in the past had this conversation with former board architects, particularly when we did the football field. And there seems to be, uh, friction between those two professional groups in terms of who should be doing which types of projects. Uh, and what the district has done in the past and continues to do is we have an architect of record that we utilize. They guide us through the process. They have an engineer that is available to them on staff, um, that, that we utilize for recommendations or advice or those sorts of things. And in addition to that, we also have a, a board engineer appointed, Mr. Vakiansburg, that is also available to us should we need, uh, his assistance in, in moving through some of these projects.
How, how long have we had SSP for?
Uh, I would guesstimate, this is probably going into their third or fourth year.
Okay, so it's been a while.
Yeah, we were at Lake Avenue, not Lake Avenue, we were at Madison Avenue, just wrapping up there when they were appointed. So we've been here for about three, three and a half years.
No, thanks for clarifying.
Thank you, Madam President. As Mr. Lotarocka pointed out in the Finance Committee report out, we have a number of items that are on the agenda this evening that are sort of housekeeping items. Uh, the district approves certain items, uh, for the school year, uh, from July one through June thirty. And as an example, some of those things are, uh, the district bank acknowledgement of the district bank acknowledgement of staff members who are assigned particular titles, such as right to know or asbestos awareness or air quality, who the school safety specialist, specialist is, those are listed off on page C seven. So there are a number of housekeeping items that we adopt. We readopt some of the management plans, the emergency plans, uh, handbooks and manuals. So you can see all those listed there. Uh, I would also point out, uh, as Ms. Etienne noted on page C ten, I believe, number thirty is the use of facility from our amphithe church. Uh, the Buildings and Grounds Committee, uh, did agree to, uh, the recommendation that we waive the facility fee, but that they pay for equipment and for staffing fees. Uh, we did reach out to the church and they agreed to that. So you'll see that's on there for just a waiver of the five hundred dollar facility fee. And then I would also note on page C fifteen, when we do present the formal agenda, item one, the award of the insurance broker. I'll be presenting that, uh, with the committee recommendation, uh, that will be Accra Short. LLC. So we'll read on the second portion there. And awards the request for proposals slash US two Accra Short LLC, based on the recommendation of the Finance Committee. I'd be happy to entertain any other questions that the board has. The insurance broker is page C fifteen. It's the addenda and it's item number one, one A. On your agenda, I mean, the last page.
Just a quick question. Um, item twenty-two, the appointment of board officials. Luis Chapeo Renzo, you have her being appointed as the SAC. Didn't she put her resignation in?
Yes, I believe she is on the agenda this evening to accept her resignation as of the thirtieth, so we can remove her.
Any other questions? Thank you. Good evening again, board members. Uh, I'd like to know if you have any questions regarding items on V one. B two. B three. B four. B five. B six. B seven. B eight. B nine. B ten. B eleven. Or B twelve. Ms. Jones?
I have a question. Um, have we been able to get a chemistry teacher yet?
At this time, we have not secured a chemistry teacher. However, we continue to look. And this is typically the time of the year where the pickings tend to be a lot better.
And maybe we can elevate the salary, which might tempt somebody to want to come. Since we do need one so badly and we are having a difficult time, are we really competitive in the market?
There is an allowance for us in those high need, high need content areas for us to bring in a teacher at a level above zero. However, we have to first have candidates that meet our criteria.
Are we advertising out in the area of the city or?
I'll defer, and let Ms. Buford talk about where we are placing our ads and how we are doing it.
If that is so the request, we will go out of our normal range as to where we advertise. But we have to clear that with business office because that involves more money.
Yes, I understand.
To answer your question, in the past, in those high need area positions, we have put, um, advertisements in newspapers across the entire state. As Ms. Buford stated, it comes at a very, very hefty cost just for a Sunday newspaper placement. So we have tried to do other things, uh, to reach out more through social media in terms of the places and spaces where we know educators go.
And if I might, I believe, we advertise on NJ School Jobs and NJ Hire, which are websites that are available to anybody with a computer or a telephone.
If we, if we can't get somebody out of New Jersey, maybe we need to put some money out there and go out of state because it's really not fair to the kids who are going into college and needing chemistry not to have that, uh, connection and lab work, which is so important to that subject.
So I believe as the superintendent indicated, uh, during the middle of the school year, it's more difficult to hire specialized teaching staff. Now that the school year is over, I'm sure that will increase with the advertisements that are out. We should be able to get, uh, some, some response. And in terms of, of the dollars that you mentioned, dollars would be requisite with the experience of the person, what they bring.
Also, I just wanted to, uh, state for the record that sometimes when you go and you recruit candidates from out of state, it becomes a certification issue and it increases the waiting period for them to receive New Jersey certification. So that can tend to be an obstacle or barrier. But what I want to be, um, very clear about is this is a problem opportunity. And I phrased it as such before when this question came up with regard to the chemistry teacher and not having one. At no point in time have our students gone lackey because we don't have a person. Our goal and our objective is not to not have a teacher in the classroom. Our goal and objective is to provide high quality, rigorous instruction for all of our students so that their graduation requirements are met. We have successfully accomplished that despite the fact that we have not had a certified chemistry teacher through Edgysir, which is an online platform where our children have outpaced and outperformed on this online platform, um, from times past when we have had a certified chemistry teacher in the classroom. So in no way do I suggest that we're not going to be very vigilant in our search for a chemistry teacher. But I want the board to have reasonable assurance in knowing that our students are outperforming on the out, online platform through Edgysir in those chemistry courses. And their grades and the content and the projects that they're producing adequately reflect that.
I no doubt that we have put out every effort for the students and I know about the program. And I appreciate the effort that we have put out. But there's still that human factor and the communications that go between human beings that would add to their ability to really perform in college. And that's what we care about, you know? So, thank you.
I need a motion to adjourn. Second. We'll be back at seven o'clock. Thank you. I'll say it again, how are you? All right. So we're gonna start this board meeting. In accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA ten four six PL nineteen seventy-five C two three one S one, amended two thousand six C seventy S two, the Asbury Park Board of Education has provided adequate notice of this meeting by sending a notice of the time, date, location, and to the extent known, the agenda of this meeting to Asbury Park Press and the New Coaster on January fourth, twenty nineteen by email. Copies of this notice have also been placed at the Administration Building Bulletin Board, District Schools, Asbury Park Municipal Building, Asbury Park Police Department, and filed with the City Clerk on January fourth, twenty nineteen. Our mission statement, Asbury Park School District will provide all students with a comprehensive and progressive education where everyone possesses the skills and character to succeed in a diverse, evolving global society. Mr. Hastings, roll call, please.
Ms. Breach?
Here.
Mr. Grillo?
Here.
Ms. Jones? Mr. Lotarocka?
Here.
Ms. Zuzinski?
Here.
Mr. Pinkney?
Here.
Mr. Saunders? Ms. Etienne?
Here.
Ms. Abazagres?
Here. Please stand for the flag salute. Our president, we just to the flag of the United States of America and to the motherland, we stand on the nation under our universal liberty and justice law.
Madam Superintendent, you have a presentation. Good evening, board members. Good evening. And members from the public, please excuse my back as I engage in my presentation tonight. Tonight's presentation is entitled Next Level, Asbury Park School District. And the focus of this presentation is regarding strengthening the CORE. CORE being an acronym for Curricular, Curricular Programs, Organizational Leadership, and Reimagining Equity. So we have to take a little bit of a journey. I want to talk to you about where we were. I talked a little bit about this when I was addressing our board member, Mr. Lotarocka. In terms of what I observed... In terms of what I observed, what I assessed when I arrived in the Asbury Park School District in October, excuse me, November 2014 as the Director of Curriculum and Instruction. We engaged in a process called a SWOT analysis. A SWOT analysis is an acronym for strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. And during this SWOT analysis, and the handout is going around, I believe you passed it out to the board members? Right. During this SWOT analysis, we narrowed it down to some key points. And so it's important, as I engage in this conversation regarding the four-year plan and where we are going, it's important to know where you came from. Because unless you understand where you're from, where you came from, it doesn't quite make sense where you are nor where you're going. So, when I arrived, it was evident that we had the highest per pupil expenditure in the state. We had the lowest graduation rate in the state. We had perpetual low student performance and achievement. I mentioned that metric earlier. When I say low student performance and achievement, I mentioned that it was over 70, our students were over 75% of them reading below grade level. Out of that 75% group, half of those students were three to six grade levels below. Context for that, three to six grade levels below means a student in high school is reading at an elementary school level. Large, large gap. That's a very deep hole when we talk about remediating students and how we get them to where they need to go. Poor internal controls, our checks and balances when I arrived, they were off, inconsistent, or nonexistent whatsoever. We had significant board governance issues. And there was also inconsistent leadership at the central office. At the time of my arrival, there were five superintendents that were there in seven years. No superintendent had received a contract for beyond their allow, they did not have a renewed contract. And there were six Directors of Curriculum and Instruction within that seven-year period. So it was very dark times in the district. This is a snapshot of some of the press coverage that occurred when we were performing our SWOT analysis. The headlines were not favorable. Many times, the media reported that a quorum didn't exist in the board meetings, which impacted the ability to have the business of the district moving forward positively. As I mentioned before, the graduation rate was highlighted as being one of the lowest in the state with the highest per pupil expenditure, meaning it was a poor return on the investment. Lots of money was being spent on students and student performance and achievement was not occurring nor was it a part of the conversation. Where we were, I mean, excuse me, which leads to today, our moral imperative. After having looked at that SWOT analysis and identifying the poor rates of student achievement, and I mentioned literacy, however, innumeracy was even higher. So when we talk about over 75% of our students not reading, we're talking about closer to 90% of our students were innumerate. And when you think about our moral imperative, this is what drives us. This is our North Star. The quote there is from Keegan and Wagner, and it's very simply put. A student that's graduating, 18-year-old, and I'm going to paraphrase that because the paraphrase is key. We're talking about students that are 18, possibly 19, 20, and we can keep students all the way up to 21, depending on the specific programmatic needs. If those students are leaving us without the skills to be college or career ready, then they are being sentenced to a lifetime of marginal employment and second-class citizenry. There is not a lot of hope for students in that, that fit in that category. So our moral imperative, what drives us, what has to be in the forefront of all that we do is our heart work. We have to lead with our heart. Because if we're not leading with the heart, meaning ensuring that our students have access to a brighter future, then we haven't accomplished much. When I arrived, we had students that were graduating from high school with significant deficiencies. What does that mean? It means that we have to assess our landscape. We assess the landscape through a continuous improvement model. How are we going to get these students to the finish line? We have to race. We are racing to the finish line. We have to do that because a lot of time has been spent not focused on making sure that our students have the requisite skills needed to be productive in society. Far too much time has not been focused on increasing and improving student performance and student achievement. Race is our acronym that we will be using as we move forward to ensure that we're in a constant state of continuous improvement. We begin this process through reflecting. Reflecting on what we have in place, our procedures, our curriculum, our facilities, fiscal responsibility, budgetary constraints, and all. What are we doing? How did it work? Did it meet the intended outcome? What we expected, what we planned, did we accomplish that? So we reflect on that process. We assess it. We could create a plan, we execute the plan, and then we go back in a state of continuous improvement to reflect and review to ensure that whatever our objectives were, that we've met them. Our action pillars now, we will continue building a brighter future. However, we are transitioning now as we talk about next level Asbury Park School District, going to the next level. What exactly does that mean? And how are we going to do that? Because performance has not been at the forefront of the conversation historically. It has been over the past few years. But historically, performance has not been the core of our conversations. Performance is going to be the first action pillar that we're going to look at. What? What are we talking about when we talk about things? We're talking about our performance. How are students performing in the Asbury Park schools? The way we're going, how are we going to do that? How are we going to address their performance with passion? And that passion is going to be tied to our purpose, our individual purpose, but also our collective purpose. When I address the team, I constantly say that we were created to change lives. That's our purpose. A pen doesn't paint the wall. A pen writes on paper. When you know your purpose, it's very easy to walk in it. So strengthening our CORE, the CORE being an acronym. How are we going to go to the next level? We go to the next level by strengthening our CORE. What does CORE stand for? Again, it stands for Curricular Programs, Organizational Excellence. If you remember where we came from, one of the things that I mentioned to you is that there was inconsistency in terms of internal controls, processes, and protocols from the highest level all the way down, starting at the board level, central office, building, all the way throughout the organization. So we're going to continue to focus on organizational excellence. Reimagining is innovation. It's looking at something that you've had, but seeing it differently, thinking differently, seeing things new. We're going to reimagine the path for our students as we continue racing to get them to that finish line. And how are we going to do it with and through equity? Creating equitable experiences for all of our students. All of our students demand and should be in receipt of a high-quality, high-rigorous academic experience in the Asbury Park School District. And so we've talked a lot, and rightfully so, in the beginning of my time in this district, not as a superintendent, but as the Director of Curriculum and Instruction and the Assistant Superintendent of Instruction, Curriculum and Instruction, on students that need remediation. When you have those high numbers, that's the appropriate conversation. We are finding that our students are moving off of these interventions. How do we create equitable learning experiences? We put programs in place for students that can take them, once they have exited out of that, and stretch them to go beyond. And that's what an example of, when I spoke to you earlier during the workshop about the Princeton Summer Program. That's a key example of one of the ways we're putting those supports in place. Closing the gap is key. Without question, we're talking about a deep, deep hole of deficiency. Again, over 75% of our students below grade level. Three to six grade levels, half of that population. Closer to 90% in New York. How do we close that gap? What are the things that we need to do and focus on in order to do that? Well, we need to understand how the gap occurred in the first place. One of the ways that we identify how the gap occurred and explain some of that information and how we manage to address it is through leveraging our extended day and extended year opportunities and learning experiences for our students. One of the main pieces that is critically important in understanding why the gap occurred in the first place is highlighted on the chart to the left. Now, you can check out the website. There's a lot of research. The topic is highly debated. It talks about the word gap. It talks about children in poverty. It talks about when children in poverty are coming from homes where there are not a lot of words being spoken to them. What does that exactly mean? What's the impact of that? This research talks about 30 million words. 30 million words that our students are not coming to us having heard spoken in their home. You can debate this research. It has been highly debated. I've seen some research that suggests it's not really 30 million, it's really 20 million. I've seen some researchers say, well, it's not really 20 million, it's really 13 million. If you're thinking like I'm thinking, it could be 1 million. I have a problem with that. Because that's a lot of words that are not being spoken around our children prior to them arriving in the district. And when we talk about remediating students as early as three years old, it has to do with what's not happening in their homes. This is not an indictment against what our parents and our families are not doing. What it is though, is it is an acknowledgement that there is very thoughtful research around what happens when vocabulary is not used outside of the school walls and its impact on the children when they arrive in the schoolhouse. We have to operate with a sense of urgency if we're just talking about remediating 1 million words and giving students access to that. And so when we talk about our intervention programs and we're talking about students that are achieving one year's growth. One year may not seem significant to some people, but it is extremely significant when you're talking about kids who are coming to you with a deficit that annually, if not addressed, if not closed, it just widens. And so we know that we're receiving students that are coming to us with a deficit. Our moral imperative impresses upon us the need to make sure that we put comprehensive supports in place, not just academic interventions, but social and emotional learning initiatives that we're putting in place to address those needs for the students. It's not about, oh, they should get someplace else. We can only control what we can control. And we can control what we do in this district, in our classrooms. And to that end, we will control that through the holistic approach that we take to engage our students. We use the extended day in our after-school program and our extended year to provide holistic, rich experiences for our students. The research shows that students that are coming out of poverty have different experiences than students that come from working class/middle-class homes and end upper-class homes. The blue chart has three lines that make those distinctions. They make the distinction between kids in poverty. They make the distinction between kids that are middle-class or working-class. And they make the distinction with kids that are affluent. The other chart speaks to extended day and extended year opportunities. Kids that come from middle-class homes or more affluent homes have more opportunities to engage in enrichment activities. Their Saturdays are full of enriching activities where they may go to local community colleges or universities for STEM programs. Our students don't have the same access because we're talking about, as you recall from the slide, we are in a high-poverty district. This is not Sanchez's assessment. This is the data. Over 95% of our students receive free and reduced lunch. Hence the designation, High Poverty District. Kids in poverty are not having those experiences. When I say we create a holistic approach for ensuring that our students have those rich, meaningful experiences, we put those experiences in our extended day, extended year program. And that looks like conversations at a family-style dinner. Our staff sit at the table in our extended day program, and they interact with our students during dinnertime so that our students have, A, access to rich conversation. They learn speaking and learning skills. They understand how to interact with adults. They also have the opportunity to talk about their day. Not, did you have a good day in school? Rather, tell me what you learned in your math class. It's another opportunity for us to take the time in the school day to have our students recap, reflect, and we have them also engaging in the same process of racing where they are in a state of continuous improvement and constantly reflecting on their day. But we're challenging them to articulate it. We challenge them to articulate it because, as I share with you, the word gap. We know that our students are coming to us with deficiencies. This is another way to check for understanding and engage them in ongoing discourse. Student support gap. How do we know that the programs are working? Lot of question that comes across all the time. So, I want to point you a direction to the far-left series of bars. That's the indicator for Read 180. What you'll see is Read 180, System 44, if you're working from the left to the right, and then Math 180. I'm going to hold Math 180 to the side for a moment. What you'll observe by looking at these charts is that our students are trending downward. Downward is a positive sign. We want to see a decrease in interventions. Will we get rid of interventions forever? No. We will always have interventions in our district. Why? Because of our moral imperative. Why? Because districts that are high-poverty districts like ours have a transient community and population. So we will always have a small group. And I say small because that those bars are showing us the decrease or the trending down of students over reliance of interventions. So as we continue to have students that come in and out of our school district, some of the students that we receive that are transient are students that have not had formal instruction. They're coming to us from other places, oftentimes outside of the United States, where education is not compulsory. And because of that, they're 14, 15, 16, and may have never been in a classroom for more than a month. Not a month in that year, a month out of their whole entire life. So there is going to be the need for interventions. But it will not be the focus of our instruction. So what you see, Read 180, we are noticing over the two years that I have sat, or one and a half years of me sitting in this seat as a superintendent, a decrease of 121 students from Read 180. System 44, we have a decrease of 74 students. Why is the System 44 decrease important? Because when I mentioned to you the data around the students that were in the over 75% range, and I said to you, half of that 75% were three to six grade levels below, that's the System 44 student. That student is the one that's three to six grade levels below. Within a two-year school period, 74 of our students have exited out of System 44, which led places them 44, which led places them into Read 180, which is the next tier of intervention. I mentioned Math 180, and the bar graph looks the way it looks because you're seeing a shorter bar graph for mathematics. That's because when we initially started this partnership, our focus was twofold. It was literacy and it was leadership. We brought math in as a secondary piece because we understood that mathematics was actually more of a need. But you don't want to do five things halfway. You want to be very deliberate, very intentional. And the design for high expectations and creating highly rigorous programs was centered around making a decision to focus on literacy first, and then we brought in mathematics. So you'll see the bar graph in the red is smallest because that's when we started initially with the Math 180 program. Math 180, similar to Read 180, is designed to remediate students that are one to two grade levels below in mathematics. And so as a result of the short period of time that we've implemented Math 180, we have decreased the need for Math 180 by one hundred and sixty-nine students. What does that translate into? Because if you're saying, well, that's great, that's nice, I don't really understand how that looks. This is how it looks. It looks like in the classroom for students that have taken algebra because Math 180 addresses algebra foundational skills. This is not the metrics that we get from and through our partnership with HMH. This is actual, real-world application from the teachers' rigorous classroom instruction and how students are doing at fairing when we compare them based on having taken the remedial course, Math 180, and its impact on their acquisition of on-grade level content. And what we're seeing here in school year twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, seventy-four percent of our students received a C or better. This previous school year that closed, ninety percent of our students that were in the Math 180 classroom received a C or higher. Why is that significant? It's significant because previously, we had a very, very low percentage of students well below fifty percent, well below forty percent, even faring in an algebra class. And so we are attributing the success of the students that we're now seeing in high school obtaining algebra credit and at the middle school achieving and obtaining algebra support based on having sat in a Math 180 classroom. Our college and career readiness programs. I'm just giving you a snapshot of where we are now, what I've been doing since I've been sitting in this seat, and what those programs look like. We've had the college and career readiness program in place prior to me being the superintendent, but since I've been there, what we have accomplished has been amazing. I have a dynamic team of individuals that have been leading this work, and I want to say I've never, ever want to give the impression that I've made or done any of this by myself. This is the collective effort of that dynamic team that I consider my executive leadership team and their respective departments. And so the YMCA Young Achievers Initiative started in twenty seventeen and twenty eighteen. We continue to do that. We have the Law Day. We're exposing our young women to civics specifically, not only our young women, but through the League of Women Voters, we have been able to ensure that our girls are focused, our young women are focused on being actively involved in politics and civic education. Our EOF Young Men's Leadership Conference is designed to increase the number of minority men applying to and attending college. These are all programs, and I'm not going to read to you off the slide because that's something that annoys me to ad nauseam when I listen to presentations. But I wanted to bring that to your attention because it's extremely important that you understand the level and the degree of engagement. Yes, it's a very dark, deep hole that we still have to get our students out of as it relates to them being on-grade level. However, the time is now. We don't have time to wait for the scores to increase before we say, let's give them rigorous, meaningful, real-world experiences. We're flying the plane and gassing it at the same time. We're continuing to engage our students in highly rigorous activity while we are strengthening their core. We had the Asbury Park High School Career Day and Job Fair. We continue to do our Lunch and Learn and College Recruiting Programs. We've had more college instant decision days than we have had in the past. Very delighted to have added Bloomfield College, most recently Debbie Sylvia. Janice Kroposki and I had an opportunity to meet with the Vice President and the President of the university last year. They were very excited to partner with us and have put forth a very wonderful and comprehensive program for our EOF students. They have supported us by coming onsite at the high school and admitting our students instantly. New Jersey City University is a new partnership that we have fostered. Georgian Court University is another instant decision day that we have started twenty-seven school year twenty seventeen last year, and we've continued that again this year. Berkeley College and Rowan University. In addition to what you already know that we have had in place in terms of our partnership with Brookdale Community College and Monmouth University, King University, and all the other schools. I did not highlight them on purpose because I wanted you to understand what we have been engaged in now. Now meaning twenty seventeen school year, twenty eighteen school year, and then twenty-eighteen, twenty nineteen school year. We continue to provide rigorous instruction because we also know that athletics is the cornerstone to a lot of the work that we're doing. We want to ensure that our students have opportunities to apply to D1 and D2 schools. How do we do that? How do we support that? Lot of conversation has come about through our Athletics Committee and my conversations with Dr. Howard and her team, as well as curriculum instruction. So, to expand and offer college-bound students these options to be D1, Debbie Sylvia and her team have worked collaboratively with the other two departments to make sure that we have an SAT and ACT program. We have a twelve-week SAT and ACT prep course that's offered. We've served approximately fifty students. This is a new program. The grant covers instructional costs, books, and materials valued at nine hundred and seventy-five dollars per student. So, take that dollar amount, nine seventy-five, and times it by fifty, and that's the actual value of this program. We have been very blessed to have that offered to our students at absolutely no cost. And this is one of the measures that we have taken so that we can stretch and grow the students that are on-grade level, give them full access and opportunity to a college or university that they might not otherwise have been able to attend. Our career academies and program updates. As you know, we have had our career academies at high school. They've been in place for three years. However, what I want to highlight and bring to your attention is the recent additions and enhancements that have come out of the Law and Public Safety Academy. We have a new instructor who's phenomenal, engages our students very high-level activities, sporting a forensics kit through collaboration with our Allied Health Instructor. They engage in kidnapping and finding crime scenes, doing chalk lines, and all of those exciting cross-curricular activities so that we're not just offering law and public safety in isolation. We're not just offering allied health in isolation, but there are opportunities for our career academies to work in tandem, and they can work on joint projects. But what has happened outside of the Law and Public Safety Academy? There's an opportunity now for certification as a Special Officer Class One. The Law and Public Safety Advisory Board has secured the following donations for our students, which includes polo shirts, gun belts with holster and handcuff case, police light bar, and a pull-up bar. The articulation agreements are under development with Brookdale Community College and the university to ensure that students that may not follow the college trajectory, but upon graduation want to follow a career trajectory in Law and Public Safety, we have provided them with the resources and the tools to understand and navigate through those professions. The Engineering Academy, Project Lead the Way, is the name of the specific program. I've talked about for students, by students, with students. The shift under Next Level and with Next Level Asbury Park School District has been just that. We are not going out as much to vendors to provide us with what we need, rather our students are looking at ways that they can solve the problem. Through the very rigorous instructional opportunities that they've had in their classes, they're learning how to build in the Engineering Academy. Instead of us having to rent a stage extension or a bridge, this is a picture of our tenth grade students, the sophomore class at Asbury Park High School, our students here in this district who built a bridge for the bridge crossing ceremony for the program that we have for our four-year-olds as they are crossing the stage to go into the big school, kindergarten. Our students decided, why would we go outside to rent a bridge when we can build our own? We can do that. We have the capability. We have the technology, and they most certainly did, and they built that. In addition, the fashion show at the high school, there was a stage extension that was needed. We've gone outside in the past for our fashion show, but we had our fashion show at the high school. What did our students say? They saw the need. They went to the teacher. The teacher supported students identifying the need, and they built the stage. That's what our students are doing now in the Asbury Park School District. The Allied Health Program has been extremely beneficial to our students. Recently, we have entered into a partnership that has afforded our students the opportunity to receive EMT certification through HAGNCAD. Our students will be, starting school year nineteen twenty, through Meridian Health, having an opportunity to secure an EMT cert. That's life-changing. That is life-changing opportunities for our children and their future. Why? Because when they graduate from high school, they can go right into a career. The certification that they can receive is twofold. They can receive state certification, or they can receive state and national certification. That means a student that picks up and moves away from the state of New Jersey can now have an opportunity to be an EMT who enter right into the workforce as a result of having completed a rich, robust educational career in the Asbury Park School District. Where we are going? We are continuing to make sure that all of our focus areas are very strategic and intentionally aligned. We have a strategic design and an educational approach that has three core tenants to it. At the top, we will continue to engage our students through rigorous instruction. To the left, the circle is about family and community partnerships. We can only control what we can control, and to that end, our focus remains and will remain on engaging our families and community. We started with a focus on literacy, and we continue to offer adult literacy offerings for our families and members of our community. And then the hands-on engagement, the relevance. Why am I doing this in the first place? Our students are not having conversations anymore about, I don't know, about this college day. We exposed them to college day this year for the first time, starting in pre-K. The conversation has to start now. It has to start early. You do not prepare for college in high school. You prepare for college here. We can control here, so what we can control, we do control. We get them at three, we're starting to have conversations with them about college. Not if college, which college? And if it's not college, which career? How are you going to know about that? So, we have rounded out the offerings. Typically, we've only offered Career Day. Now we're bundling Career Day on one time, at one time, with the College Day. So our students can speak intelligently, so they'll know the colors of certain schools. They can pick schools. They are identifying that their teachers' blue splash have gone to college as well. Very important. We think back to the slide that I told you about. Kids in poverty, the access to words. How many words are spoken around them, over them, in their hearing? Kids mimic what they hear. If they don't hear rich, robust vocabulary, they can't speak it. If they don't hear college conversations or career conversations, they can't speak it. We're teaching our parents how to have those conversations at the same time so that we can put wraparound supports, not just around the student, but around the entire family. Here's our current reality. This is significant because while I talk about all of that rich, robust instruction, the reality is we have to do more with less. This slide lays out specifically how much less is less. School year, the upcoming school year, we'll be looking at having to make significant budgetary cuts. We're looking at a twenty-three percent reduction, which amounts to approximately, this is estimated, and I want to be real clear, it's estimated. We're looking at four-point-seven million dollars in a reduction of aid. The following year, we're looking at five-point-eight, slightly over five-point-eight million dollars. The following year, five-point-four million dollars. The following year, three-point-four million dollars. The last year, slightly over one million dollars, which gets us to a total reduction, no, approximately twenty, a little over twenty-three million dollars. The challenge, how do you do more with less? What does that look like? Well, I'm going to tell you. I'll tell you what it doesn't look like. It doesn't look like what we have right now. That's not possible for it to look the same way today when we're losing millions of dollars. The goal, the instructional focus. The instructional focus, as we move forward, it has to change. We have a myriad of issues, one of which that's significantly tied and correlated to the reduction in aid is our declining enrollment. We have declining enrollment for a myriad of reasons. We can only control what we have control over. We can control this as a school district. We must control this as a school district because when we think about our hard work, we have to make sure eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, depending on their programmatic needs, that we are making sure that they have access to college or careers through the rigorous programming that we put in place. So what does that look like? If I said that, it can't look the same way it looks now. This is what it looks like. It looks like a reorganization and a consolidation. We need to rethink, reimagine what we have and what we're doing. How do we do that? We do that by consolidating. Consolidating and reorganizing our schools. We're going to consolidate into two, pre-K to third-grade STEM academies. We're going to have an upper elementary innovation academy that will serve students in grades four through six. And then we're going to look at our high school differently. We're going to reimagine the high school. We're going to reimagine it to include career and academic pathways for students in grades seven to twelve. We have a very large structure. I have a schematic that I've looked at. The schematic supports us being able to contain students in grades seven to eight while allowing the rest of the students to not interfere fully with our younger learners. What is the purpose of that? I'll talk a little bit more. Our pre-kindergarten, third-grade STEAM academies. What are we looking Our pre-kindergarten and third-grade STEAM academies, what are we looking to accomplish? We're looking to have two buildings house our pre-K to third-grade STEAM academies, Thurgood Marshall and Bradley Elementary School. When I give my superintendent's report, I'm going to talk about and spotlight what's going on at Thurgood Marshall. We're going to create STEAM-focused schools. This is the goal, to create STEAM-focused schools. STEAM-focused schools are schools that incorporate coding and robotics to ensure that our students are engaged in critical thinking. Coding is a competency that our students need, it's a skill that they should have. Much like a foreign language, coding is a language. And we need to teach that language to our students early. And we want to start that, pre-K to third grade. We're going to continue to make sure that our lessons are coinciding with the curriculum, the current units of study. We want to engage students in deeper understanding of their environment. We've had partnerships with conserve wildlife. Our students, last year during the summer, they spent time looking at the osprey nest. Not because black and brown and Hispanic kids need to just look up in the sky at birds because there's nothing else for them to do. The purpose of having them look in the sky is so that they can look down and look around. They look in the sky at the bird's nest, and they look down and around because they need to understand early, while we are remediating deficiencies, they still have a responsibility to their environment and to this world, to be responsible in their behavior and their actions. Students become responsible when you engage them in the deeper understandings and deeper learning about what their role is as it relates to their environment. When our friends, the little ospreys, can no longer have their nest, what are... So as I transition now to the superintendent's report, I want to say, as I mentioned, the launching of our Visual and Performing Arts Academy for the high school. We are continuing to provide and put performing arts experiences in place for our students. Last week, we were fortunate to have our students grace the stage, our third-grade students graced the stage at the New Jersey Performing Arts Center in Newark along with my colleague, Superintendent Roger Lyon, from the Newark, Superintendent of the Newark Public Schools. Our students were on stage with students from Newark's, all across Newark's schools for the third-grade recorder program. That is a partnership that we have in collaboration with the NJ PAC, where our students are getting early musical foundational skills. We will continue to place third-grade recording, recorder and music programming in place as we have our students advance up, so that we continue to have this theater in our schools. There is also a Disney in Schools partnership that we have been wonderfully excited about. Our past production was 101 Dalmatians. This year, we are looking to, and is an agenda item, have our students perform the Arista Cats. When we look at our monthly student enrollment, we can, you'll see that it's been fairly consistent year over year, month to month. Our enrollment has, for the most part, remained the same, as well as our student attendance. Our spotlight school is Thurgood Marshall in terms of the highest enrollment increase for school year 2018 and to 2019. And as well as at Thurgood Marshall Elementary School, their attendance rate has been well over 90%. That completes my superintendent's report. Thank you, Madam Superintendent. So now we're at the section where we have public participation in accordance with Board Policy 0167. If you have a comment, concern, please come to electronic, remember you have three minutes. Name, address, please. It is now open, thank you. Okay, it is now closed.
Hi, Ernest Meenolin, 400 Dale Lake Drive, apartment 5B, Asbury Park, New Jersey. I'm a home and lived here since August of 2007. I live in proximity to a lot of schools. I live on the fifth floor. I get to look out and see things that I guess people living in homes don't see, and particularly the high school. And in my travels, mostly to a place where I shop for food, I go past a lot of schools, many schools. And in addition, I spend, am I out of time?
The timer is right, right over by Mr. Hastings.
Would I have three minutes?
Three minutes.
I had three, okay. Well, then maybe I'll skip all this. I just want to go on the record as saying, on June 9th, at the Asbury Park High School, there was an event that included beer, liquor, smoking, and I made a police report. I'd also like to go on record saying that sometime after that, at the transportation center, which included children at both events, in the transportation, there was a dispensing of liquor from a local bar or distillery. And at the high school, there were bar owners there, there was liquor everywhere being offered, money being exchanged, there were students, apparently it was a fundraiser. So, everything was documented. I then proceeded to notify the school superintendent and the school principal. After about 20 calls to try and get through, I eventually spoke to some people, and basically went nowhere, so I've taken the police reports, and I've now sent them to the state, and I'm hoping that the state will step in and investigate. And that's it, these events were police in uniform, firemen in uniform, police not in uniform, police, rather, firemen not in uniform, and in uniform, police equipment, fire equipment, the public, teachers, members of something called the Lake Street Cooperative, where the...
Thank you for your comments.
Lieutenant, right, sir?
Yes, thank you for your comments.
No, I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Anyone else with other participation? Okay, public participation is now closed, thank you. State monitors report, she is, your acceptance submits, Ms. Hastings?
Thank you, Madam President. Could I have a motion for items nine A and B on A1?
I'll move it. Second. Question? Roll call, please, excuse me.
Ms. Zosinski?
Yes.
Mr. Grillo?
Yes.
Ms. Breach?
I'm sorry, I'm, where are we at?
We're on page A1.
Okay, stay.
I'm staying, thank you. Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Lattaraca?
Yes.
Mr. Pinkney?
Yes.
Satien?
Stay.
So does Anderson.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so board members, in regards to the presentation that Madam Superintendent presented, do we have any questions, comments? Mr. Grillo?
So, first of all, good night. Superintendent Gray, I want to commend you on a thoughtful and really radical shift in what we're going to be doing with our schools. The one thing I just wanted to see was, is there an estimate yet? And maybe it's too early to tell, but how mu, what the cost savings are in terms of dollar-wise of consolidating all the schools and consolidating some of the the actions involved too. Is there any kind of dollar amount that we're looking at in terms of cost savings yet? Or is it still too early to tell?
It's still in its infancy stages in terms of the dollar-for-dollar savings. However, the consolidation does afford us a significant savings for the earlier parts of the aid reduction that we're facing.
And with the Barack Obama Elementary School and repurposing it, is, are we thinking of leasing it out to private entities or doing some sort of partnership, a non-private entity? But is there any, has there been any kind of thought into what that repurposing, like what's your vision in terms of what that repurpose will look like?
There's a lot of thought into what the possibilities can be. I'd like to engage community stakeholders, have that meeting with them. Some of the, some of the vision does include having shared services or shared services opportunities, does include expanding offerings for our community and to provide more holistic wraparound supports for our families that are right in that immediate catchment area.
And then the only other question is, and this is something that I've actually heard from, from some folks in the community about the Dorothy McNish Center, and if that is going to have any, there's any plans for that in terms of some of this consolidation? I know you haven't, you didn't mention it in the presentation, but I want to just put it out there to see what's, what's going on with that.
Unfortunately, we had, based on something that happened with our panel, it impacted and caused a fire, not our panel inside, but in the city, the panel near the parent center. There was an issue there, it caused a fire, and it caused us to have to take the parent center off the grid for a significant amount of time so that we could renovate it and make sure that we could pass the inspection and have our families, you know, to, to open it back up for access. Because our families had already experienced having their adult literacy classes displaced, we continued to write it out for this year. On the last board agenda, our supervisor for early child, that oversees early childhood education, Lauren Jackson, as well as our district parent involvement, bilingual parent involvement specialist, Sonia Ilisari, have, were transferred on the previous agenda and are now going to be housed at the Dorothy McNish Parent Center. We will continue to place more robust instruction and programming there. Ms. Jackson has been one of the consistent, present people that was present there at the parent center. She's done a fantastic job as the registrar for central registration. So we were able to continue to have our registration at the parent center, but we could not offer additional programs until now. So, we will expand that. Part of the repurposing of Obama School is, anytime you have a building in that way, you know, you still have some basic expenses. And so when you talk to me about, have we looked at it, and I said it's a little bit in its infancy stages, I just want to be clear that there are always going to be some fixed costs associated that we just can't ever get rid of, one of which is utilities, right? You have to make sure the school stays heated, it's got to be winterized, it has to have all of those things. This is an opportunity, or rather, I'd say a pro-opportunity for us to think about how we can reimagine that space as we have to have and encumber those fixed costs, but yet provide something that continues to give support to our community. Any other questions?
The only one, I just want to add is that, Joey, we're here that at one point, was it five, six years ago, maybe a little longer, we had to consolidate because of Barack Obama, because of some mold remediation, I think, some other stuff.
Asbestos.
Asbestos.
Stop.
So it is doable, it's something that can be done. You know, there could be a number out there that you could get an estimate of what, what we could, we saved at that time for not utilizing, but we had to spend money in removal, so, but it's something that can be done.
Could I clarify that the issue?
Yes.
At the parent center was a transformer on a telephone pole issue and power back and forth to the building, and then, not really a city issue, but a power issue.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Lattaraca?
Just a little more of what the thinking is from, from sitting back that central office, go to Obama, why the maintenance center and redo the maintenance center, and then perhaps renovate someone at Obama for the maintenance group? Well, what was some of the thinking there to, to do kind of a two-step approach rather than one?
Well, for one, the maintenance building needs to be, it needs renovation, like it needs to be fixed, right? So if we have to go and have the significant renovations that are being proposed, then we might as well make it fit our use, so that we have accomplished a twofold purpose. We also have ample parking space at Obama School that will accommodate what we need for our maintenance vehicles and maintenance equipment over there, that now, if they're not going to be in that building in that structure, it will afford us an opportunity and a space to do that at the Obama School location. Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Madam Superintendent.
No, after I think about it, I'll probably have more, but right now I don't have any. It's going to take some time to have a digest.
I need a motion to go into executive session. Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act allows for the exclusion from discussion at the public portion of a meeting of certain matters as outlined below, and whereas the Asbury Park Board of Education wishes to discuss such matters made and will make such discussion public when a proper conclusion has been reached, now therefore being resolved that the Asbury Park Board of Education will hold a closed executive session on this date, June 27th, 2019, at Asbury Park, New Jersey, for the purpose, purposes as outlined and described below. Upon return, action may be taken for litigation matters or client privileges, attorney-client privilege, and also personnel matters, including superintendent's evaluation. So, we expect, I'm sorry. Oh, okay. So, we expect to return in about 25 minutes or less. Thank you very much. Oh, roll call, please, please.
Thank you. Mr. Grillo?
Yep.
Satien?
Yes.
Ms. Breach?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Lattaraca?
Yes.
Ms. Zosinski?
Yes.
Mr. Pinkney?
Yes.
Was that, was Anderson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Board members?
Ms. Breach? Roll call?
Yeah, present.
Mr. Grillo?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Lattaraca?
Here.
Ms. Zosinski?
Here.
Mr. Pinkney?
Here.
Satien?
Here.
So does Anderson.
Here.
Thank you.
Madam Superintendent? I'm going to turn it over to you to ask for consent agenda. Good evening, after thoughtful conversation, I'd like to request a consent agenda for items on pages B1 to B12. Second. Okay, now question?
The only question I have is, I really don't want to vote yes on Alicia Vila Ranzo's resignation. I think she's been an asset to this district, and we are going to miss her, and I wish her luck. But other than that, I don't have a comment.
Okay.
I want a second that.
I want a third that.
For us. All around. All around, everybody. Okay, any other questions, please? Great. Mr. Hastings, roll call, please.
Thank you, Madam President. It's all items, B1 through B12, Ms. Zosinski?
Pardon?
You have a question?
No, yes.
Yes? Okay, yes, we have a question.
Yes, I have.
Okay, just a second, please.
No, it's a yes vote. It's a yes vote.
Oh, it's a yes vote.
No questions.
Yes, I'm stating on B8, number 20, and B2, number 3, letter K.
Thank you. Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. LaRocca?
Yes.
Ms. Breach? I'm sorry.
Right.
Uh-oh. Maybe that was, yeah.
Hold on, I'm abstaining.
Okay. Ms. Breach?
I'm stating on B13A, B23I, B54L, and no on B820.
Mr. Pinkney?
Yes, I'm stating on B10, number 32.
Satian?
Yes. Yes, I'm stating on B13A.
Sabas Anderson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Same.
Here's all items, pass.
Just wanted to give you a little time, Mr. Hastings, whenever you're ready.
Thank you.
Your agenda.
I'd like to note for the board, on C7, we're deleting Ms. Di Lorenzo's name, and on C151A, we're voting on AccureSure LLC as the insurance broker. That being said, could I have a motion for all items, C1 number 1 through C15 number 2?
Second.
Question?
I'm sorry, so I'm going to have an issue with AccureSure, which, where was that in the addendum?
C15.
C15.
C151A. If you look about halfway down that motion, we noted at the workshop that AccureSure LLC would be inserted as the resolution.
Okay.
Do you have a?
Yes.
Okay. All right, question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Grillo?
Yes, on everything except, I'm stating on C5, number 12, letter C.
Okay. Satian?
Yes, on everything except I'm voting no on C15 number 1.
Thank you. Ms. Breach?
Yes, on everything except C15 number 1, no.
Ms. Jones?
Yes, on everything except C15 number 1.
Mr. LaRocca?
Yes, on everything but C151A.
Ms. Zosinski?
I'm staying.
On all items?
On everybody?
No, oh, I'm sorry. No, we're talking already saying that.
Close.
No, yes on all items, I'm staying from C15 number 1. I don't...
Mr. Pinkney?
Yes.
Sabas Anderson?
Yes.
Item C15 fails.
Members of the board, we have an issue at this point in that as of July 1st, the board will not have an insurance broker. That presents a problem and I urge you to address it tonight prior to July 1st as the contract cannot be extended, the current contract cannot be extended. It's my understanding that it expires June 30th and therefore as of July 1st, if we walk away right now, we will not have an insurance broker.
Was there, was there another motion on somebody else, another recommendation from the...
I would move for Treadstone to be the insurance broker of record for general liability and healthcare dental for the district.
I'll second that motion. I'll second, I'll second that motion.
Question?
We have a question.
Okay.
What do we know about this other, what do we know about this other firm?
The, one of the principals of the firm was a principal in with, I believe, Brown and Brown and was in C-Biz. C, I'm sorry, C-Biz. It was the main contact for the district, so Mr. Hastings has a number of years of experience with that individual. As I said, the committee recommended AccureSure, but the committee didn't narrow it down to AccureSure and, and Treadstone and that material was, that was what, only those two sets of materials were sent out to the board. They, a number of innovative ideas toward wellness, not all that we would say we want to do, but they presented a, a plan beyond the plan that's in the typical state health plan.
Anyone else? I just have a question for Mr. Hastings. You're dealing with the principle of Treadstone, it was, wasn't professional and responsible?
Yes, so approximately two years ago, the district shifted from C-Biz, which covered our general liability insurance and at that time corporate employee benefits that handled our healthcare. We then moved to AccureSure about two years ago, as I say, but our primary contact with C-Biz was Mr. Mancini, Giovanni Mancini, and we had worked with him for about two, maybe three years as well as our primary contact at C-Biz. He then went out on his own and started his own firm and had approached the district. The district interviewed him, I believe, last year. Some of the committee members were enthusiastic about the presentation, however, they felt at that point, as reflected in the minutes of our committee meeting, that we wanted to give that a little time to blossom before we made a commitment. He came in again, as Mr. LaRocca said, made a presentation with his team that impressed the board and there were certainly plenty of pros and a few cons to his presentation. So we've worked with Mr. Mancini in the past in a different, under a different title, if you will, as a C-Biz representative, and he's been interviewed twice now under his company, Treadstone.
Any other questions? We have a pending motion to appoint Treadstone, so Mr. Hastings, roll call, please.
Mr. LaRocca?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Breach?
Yes.
Mr. Grillo?
No.
Ms. Zosinski?
Yes, I don't want to tie.
Mr. Pinkney?
Stay.
Satian?
Yes.
Sabas Anderson?
No.
Motion carries. Nothing further from the business office?
Hey, I need a motion, please. Can I just make a, I'm sorry, I know it's late, it's past eight o'clock. I want to say I went to Sustainability Summit up at Bellworks. I had never been to Bellworks, a wonderful place. They did a nice job. I think it's a worthwhile event to attend. If you think about it, next year, they have it in the same place, it was well-run, had a lot of people in attendance, and I got to ride this little scooter, what's it called? Lime? Oh, it was fun. So, but the whole program was good and I'd recommend it next year for anybody who wants to go.
Thank you. Any other members? And I will see you next month at Bellworks.
All right.
Check your body, motion closed.
Motion? Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye.